Of our areas like Mankas, Cortez, we'll kind of, we won't even talk about Dolores right now because of the Dolores River Valley. But there's a lot of property to the west and, and to the south, which, which it does make a lot of sense. You have the water there, the sewer there, and it makes a lot of sense. One of the big, I just got off of a Zoom meeting, and one of the items that they were talking about was how all of our real estate is off the charts right now in the more rural or urban counties because of COVID. So as we're looking at it for our land use code, we are kind of in the thought that, um, to create more affordable housing and more housing close to the infrastructure that, uh, uh, one through three zoning makes sense. So any comments from you all?
This is Rachel. Um, I'll comment. Um, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good opportunity for the city and county to like work together on future planning. Um, because you know, with increased density, we want to consider utilities. We want to consider our, our roads and thoroughfares. Um, and so I think starting with the, yeah, the three or five miles around city limits and, and letting the acreage reduce to one acre. And then kind of including, um, you know, the, the different water companies and, um, Cortez sanitation. You know, where, and kind of really choosing areas where we think resident, where, where it can become dense. Cause I think there's more potential on the north side of town versus the south, um, just because of the canyon. So what, what can we do to help Cortez sanitation build out their, uh, infrastructure that way? Allow these one acre lots there, have Empire Electric, you know, have our roads all line up. Get the zoning that we want for, you know, like the highways commercial and kind of think about the, the zoning areas too. Um, I think it's a good idea and I think starting close to towns is a great start. And then if that's working well, then, well, I guess that's all. Yeah. I don't have anything to say about the greater county.
Would anybody else like to make a comment?
Uh, this is Mayor Levy. Um, I, I agree with Rachel. I think it's a good idea to, to plan these things out, uh, uh, before, uh, so we can kind of link up the roads and the infrastructure, the water lines, um, essential, uh, early planning is essential.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Cantler, you want to?
Uh, first of all, thanks for everybody coming together tonight. This is great to talk board to board, um, and, and nourish this relationship. Um, along with while we're talking about water and sanitation, I think we should also put on the to do to plan, um, for internet access.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Commissioner Cantler, you want to make a comment about the sanitation department? I know that he was on that board.
Um, I, I did, I did serve on the sanitation district board for, for several years. Uh, they do have, uh, some of their district that expands beyond the city of Cortez, south down on, I believe it's G1, G2 or G3 maybe, uh, south down by the M and M. So some of that infrastructure already exists outside of the city limits. And, um, you know, there is a potential for expansion because of the northern plant that sits, uh, out by McKelmo or, uh, Maverick East. Um, there, there is a lot of area out there that could also be identified, uh, for expansion all the way out to L and M road. So the north would be, um, easily picked up. Uh, obviously there would be some cost, but it would be, it would be easy to get that picked up. But more, more than that, it was just a, a matter of, is there any real rubs with anybody of, of, of reducing this to the AR one through three from the cities?
It doesn't, it doesn't look like it.
Nope. So.
I guess the, the only concern I have is, um, bringing Monazuma Water Company into the conversation. You know, how many more customers can they take on? How much water do they have? Um, cause I know like Blue Door, they buy water from the city, right?
I believe so.
So it's not, um, their own infrastructure essentially. So yeah, I think it'd be great to get a, just, um, talk to the utility companies and see what they think as well.
The, the last survey that we had done at the sanitation district, and I want to say we did it in 2016, um, when we were doing flow meter tests on our sewer lines, we were actually much lower than, than we were in 2008 and nine because, um, it seemed like we were growing and then all of a sudden we had a reduction. But in 2008, we had a, um, a decline in the whole, you know, country. So as far as obviously we'd have to bring Monazuma Water Company in, but I would almost venture to say without having to, to talk to Steve out there, that they could probably handle quite a bit of growth. Uh, and when I say growth, smart growth to me makes sense to say like one to maybe two percent max. That's smart growth. That's something that's easily to handle and it's, you know, you can take care of your infrastructure with it at that percentage. Now over that, it's going to become a little bit overwhelming.
Is there any other questions about the county, county land use code updates? Anybody else have any questions about what we're, um, talking about that we're going to be talking about on the 22nd?
Uh, this is Mayor Levy again. Uh, I'd just like to thank you for, um, postponing the Dolores River Valley, uh, uh, comments or decision until, until we do some more, uh, research and get more community input. Uh, I think people were kind of upset about, uh, the changes and, uh, I think it's good that we're going to, uh, discuss that further. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else before we move to the next topic?
Yeah, just real quick. Um, so we're speaking specifically, um, from one acre, uh, from three acre to one acre. Um, would there be a cap then with each, you know, you're talking about smart growth at one percent to two percent? So would that mean each property owner can only cut, or what does that look like, that smart growth? If you could explain that.
As far as, I guess I don't quite understand your question, Amy.
So we're speaking the, the county land use code specifically for going from three acres down to one acre minimum, right?
And that's not the entire county. I don't think that that's not, well, it's not my thought now. I don't know how, um, the planning commission is going to present it to us if it's countywide everywhere. But to me, and I'm speaking just for me, as that if you keep that AR one through three within, say, say the zone of influence within that three mile radius, then that keeps the infrastructure very close together. I mean, we talked about, uh, internet access. Well, if you, if you get a sprawl, it's not as easy to take care of. This way everything is closer, but it gives people that don't want to have just a small city lot, just a little bit more piece of the pie. But the other guys that don't want three acres, they don't have to have three acres. So that's kind of my thought to the AR one through three.
Did you get that, Amy?
Sorry, I just muted her.
Sorry, Amy.
Oh, yeah, I got muted. Uh, that kind of went out on my end. Uh, got a little muffled. Can you paraphrase?
Basically for the AR one through three to take effect within the zone of influence around the cities. So Dolores, Mankas and Cortez.
Okay, great. So, okay, so we're just talking about that zone of influence. Great. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I feel like that's a really great place to start because it's, keeps it in a little bit more control. We can make sure that those utilities and services reach those folks and it gives people like that country comfort, but close to town, you know? So I, I do like that thought rather than just like free rein for everybody in the county. But, and it also, yeah, it just really opens up the, the door for more potential growth around our community as well.
And.
Look, if I could jump in just a minute, it's really difficult for us on Zoom to hear what you're saying. Uh, I don't know whether it's, uh, you're not close enough to the microphone or what, but it's, uh, you're going and coming.
Okay, David, we'll, we'll try to be closer to the microphone. Could you hear that? Okay?
Much better. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
And I'd like to add, um, make sure the people identify themselves because, uh, we can't see you speaking from the Zoom screen.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. We didn't realize that. I'll tell you what, um, if there's no more questions about the county land use code, which I know we're going to be having a lot more discussions. which I know we're going to be having a lot more discussions about that. I'm going to rearrange the agenda ju- just because it fits as we're talking about the county land use code to the third item on the agenda, which is the roads and the continuity of naming, naming when it comes into the city from the county and vice versa. So I'm not for sure who brought that topic up, or would you like to, uh, address it? Did you? Is this a Rachel?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Rachel.
Okay, this, this is where it gets hard. This is Rachel. So this is where it gets hard because it's like crossing into both of my worlds. Um, cause Doug and I just addressed off of Road L, but it's like the section of Alamosa. But it, it's a county property and they're looking just for an ag access with an address. So we addressed it Road L because it's just a tiny section of Alamosa, but there's no real definitive beginning and end. And I, I think just for 911 purposes, I think we need to take a, a, a better look at those and, and kind of be more consistent with road names. Um, I would like to see, I mean, just because it's like a tiny part of city limits, I think it should still say Road L. Um, that, because that's for 911, because no one else is addressed off of Alamosa. I think there's only one house addressed Alamosa Street. Um, the same could have been said with Road J, but, and Seventh Street, but that ship might've sailed. Um, but just, just those little sections, I think unless there's like a, a definitive intersection, like four-way intersection, then we should keep consistent road names.
Would it be too confusing to throw out, say, County Road J points?
Yes.
Best of both worlds.
Does, does anybody else want to make a comment about that? I think we would all be in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, I think that's just, we sit down and look at the, um, you know, what makes sense. Is it Alamosa or is it Al? Is it J or is it Seventh? But at some place those have to, to change. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think we could look at that for sure.
Is that going to affect anybody's current address then, if we're going to have those continuities, continuities in road names?
I think there's a chance before it does. Yeah, before development, um, goes in and, and then we get confused with addresses. But I will say with the first, the first two topics we talked about, I think as the city, we, we still need to do our side of the homework is we need an updated master streets plan and that we can work off of to consider land use planning and looking at road name consistency or so.
All right. All right. Let's go to the second topic now. Let's go to the citywide cleanup and use of the landfill. Who would like to talk about that? Would the city manager like to talk? Yeah, I guess he would. Go ahead.
I, I hope this works, um, because I'm at home. Uh, this was a question of the city is not doing a, we're picking up things, um, cleanup. And we were wondering, um, we're going to do it in September, but we would like to have a day where uh, residents can drop things at the landfill at no cost.
Okay, John. And so I think that our county administrator has some thoughts about that. So we're going to let Shaq Powers speak.
So the last couple of years, uh, the county has participated and of course, we usually do this around Earth Day, but then COVID hit. But, uh, so, uh, we have no problem, uh, letting county residents, which includes the city, Town of Mankas, Town of Dolores, uh, drop off stuff at no charge at the landfill on that day. Um, I think where the mu- waters got muddied before was trying to also build an improvised transfer station at the park, uh, over by the BMX track. And I, I think we're okay with, uh, doing no charge at the landfill. We just don't see the need for an improvised transfer station for a weekend. And I don't know if that's something that's still on your radar or not.
I don't believe so. Um, one question for you then. Is this going to be coordinated with Mankas and Dolores so everybody in the county is doing it on one day? Or, um, are, are, are we allowed to just set up our own day in September?
Uh, you know, the county would take, uh, stuff from all residents within the county on that day and no cost. Um, and we can certainly send the memo out to Mankas and Dolores. The, they usually do their own cleanup days anyways, um, apart from the city of Cortez, but they've not asked us to cover the tipping fees for those days before. But we'd be happy to send the memo to.
Why don't you, why don't you guys come up with the day, John, and then we'll, then we can get the information out sooner.
We have, and I will get on them to let you guys know tomorrow.
John, John, this is Jim. I, I've got one question for you and this was actually, this is not my idea. This was Commissioner Sukla's idea. But if we do this, um, and, and put the tipping fees for free, could we also encourage people to bring a can of, of food or some kind of a non-perishable, um, item? And then that way we could actually donate it because of COVID to, uh, some of the food pantries here locally. Not saying that they have to, but we could highly encourage it. And again, this was not my idea. This was, uh, Commissioner Sukla's idea. But, um, like, like we did our tires last year, we had 30,000 tires. And if we had a can of soup or, uh, something, that, that feeds a lot of mouths in our county. And if we work together on this type of a thing, you get no tipping fees, but bring a, a 50 cent can of soup or something. That, that feeds a lot of people.
That'd be a wonder, well, no matter whose idea it is, it's a wonderful idea.
This is Mayor Levy. I, I think that's a great idea also. Thank you for coming up with that idea, whoever.
We'll just say this, Board of Commissioners came up with that idea. How's that?
Um, before, before, I just, I think, uh, Shaq, John was just double checking. Do you think it would be too busy at the landfill if you did all three cities on one day?
Nope. We've done these cleanup days before. As long as the wind doesn't go over 40, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right then, with this topic, the next topic is the kennel and the library agreements. So who would like to speak on behalf of those two agreements?
I will go ahead and take that up. Um, I assume that you guys are about the same point as we are in our budget and just wanted to get that on your radar, um, that, uh, both of them accept county residents and, um, well, particularly the kennels getting very expensive to operate.
Okay.
So John, I don't know if, uh, Ben Burkett made you aware or not. Uh, but we paid, uh, towards the kennel and the library in January. And then the city invoiced us, I want to say in July, and we paid again. So we paid double this year what we had planned to pay. That's not going to kneecap us, but my thoughts at this point would be that unless the commissioners wanted to up the amount that they had paid from this year, that, uh, you just hold on to that check in, in your balances and hold it for next year.
Okay.
John, this is Jim. I, I have a question because it says agreement. So I've never seen an agreement. Do we actually have agreements for, um, contributions towards the kennel and the library?
Uh, it's been a while. I.
I don't believe so. I think it's just.
I don't think so either. I think it was just a verbal.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. Okay.
This is John Baxter. I'm, I don't think we have any agreements. I mean, this has come up. We, we've changed the amount we've contributed, I think in the past too.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Let's go to the next, uh, agenda item. That's, uh, the mutual struggles with Empire Electric.
I'll go ahead and take this one too. Um, I had heard that you guys are being gouged on your fast charging for your electric vehicles. And as of today, Empire disconnected our hydro from, uh, the grid. So, um, we were in a panic there for quite a, quite a ways because, um, the water we take in for the whole city goes through that hydro plant and it goes through the meter and that's how we account to, um, for the water, domestic water we use. Empire gave us very short notice and said, well, we're disconnecting. We're not going to take your hydro anymore and didn't give us a reason why. Still hasn't not given us a reason why. And they have, uh, as of today, they came and, um, made sure we had disconnected and went around the meter. Um, so my thought was that, um, we both seem to have a mutual, um, problem here. Um, and part of it is, um, Empire is like us, you know, should be a community organization and doesn't seem to be, um, wanting to do that anymore.
So I wonder if there's a way, would there be a way for the county to buy the power from you for the charging station?
Um, you know, we asked the same thing. Can we just put our power out there and, um, freewheel it ourselves? And they said no.
They said no? Empire Electric said no?
Yes.
Because it's going through their distribution system?
Yes, sir.
So that, that's kind of the same item that we ran up against, except for ours wasn't for distribution. It was for demand fees. So, um, Phil Johnson and I both sit on the TPR, and this came up at our last TPR meeting, that, you know, the state is working diligently to try and get these rapid chargers out. And Route 66 where we sit at is, is one of the places that they'd like to do that. Well, we had last year, um, went to one of your presentations. You all said that you weren't interested in seeking that rapid charger. So we took it over. We were, we basically had the grant, but we couldn't come up with, uh, an agreement with Empire Electric. It was in the, it, it was six to $7,000 a month that, what, what it could potentially cost us for demand charges. Well, obviously that's, that's just not doable. So we were looking at a battery, um, to charge off of a trickle charger or our solar system. But then you could discharge it to a rapid charger and we haven't gotten any other, um, action on the battery because those battery banks are, I guess, very expensive also. So to answer your question as far as, do we need to get together as a group, the B O C C, the city council, and go to Empire Electric together to say, you know, we're all in the same boat? How do we, how are we going to work together? Because it seems like Empire Electric is wanting to put themselves on an island.
I would also say from, uh, just from an economic development standpoint, every time the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade sends us a project that wants to come to Colorado, we try to respond to it. The number one reason that we can't is because of utilities and normally electricity. Uh, we, when we research with Empire Electric, they say, we can't do that much power but in one to three years is always the answer we get.
Well, one thing I would add about that, and it would be, so if you remember La Plata County, uh, La Plata Electric, um, is trying to get out of their contract with Tri-State. And so I know that, uh, there is something in there in Tri-State that there's 5% renewable resources that they're trying to get to. Um, there's a, there's a term that's called, it's called wheeling. And because I couldn't figure that out, well, if you didn't get the electricity from Tri-State, then how could you provide the power for the city of Durango and La Plata County? That's where the term wheeling comes in, that I believe by law, um, they have to let that power. It's, it's their infrastructure, but it has to run through there because the, the monopoly laws. And, um, you can buy power from somewhere else. So I'm not for sure that that would be a dead deal or not as far as, I think that needs to be investigated more. Maybe you could have your lawyer look into it because if La Plata County can do it, then why couldn't you guys do it with your hydro power?
I guess my comment too is I'm wondering if it's because of their board members. If, if that's the blockage that we're, we're running into. Because, uh, like through my GIS position, you know, we were going to work with them to get almost countywide aerial imagery, um, for multiple purposes and multiple agencies were going to contribute. And Empire Electric was going to be one of the biggest funders because the idea came from them. And then they pulled out because their board didn't even want to consider it. So we had already had the project in motion, so we decided to reduce it, um, and just leave them out. But that was, uh, an issue with their board and then with the economic development. It seems like if someone's not ready there with a check, they don't want to, they don't want to build out their infrastructure for economic development purposes. They're just focused on, you know, their co-op. Um, but I think they're having a board election coming up. So maybe we just need to be more engaged in, you know, what the, the new, like the, the people running, what their ideas are. And if they want to build a relationship with either of us or all of us together. So.
Is it the board or is it Tri-State? Like which direction are they getting, is it coming from? Is my question. We don't know.
I don't think we know. We met with their board, oh, several months ago. And, uh, we just, we didn't get any action from the board at all as far as wanting to move off of anything that they have in place. So, um, I, I think they can purchase the 5% of their power elsewhere than Tri-State. But it didn't seem like the board had any real movement unless I read that wrong. They, they really didn't care. It's like, you guys do whatever you want, but you're going to get no help from us. So if you look at it from, from like a socio-economic standpoint, they should be playing together. I mean, we're, we're all in the same, uh, group here. So have, have, John, have you guys as a council, have you approached Empire Electric?
Phil Johnson and I, uh, had a meeting with Andy, uh, to discuss it. And he was just kind of, uh, rather flippant about it and just said, hey, we can do it. We're going to.
So are they taking you offline?
You know, to add on to your thought there, they just completed their solar farm, so they may not need our hydro.
And that was my question.
Took them over 5%. I, you know, I'd heard that also, um, but you know, I don't know that for sure.
So my question, John, is, is they say, I had read the newspaper a little bit about this. Are they saying that they, that even in the future, they don't want to, to take the hydro power? Or until the agreements are signed or can you answer that?
Um, right now it appears they just don't want it at all.
What were you selling your power to? Like four or five cents a kilowatt?
Um, that sounds about right, yes.
So that's still competitive with Tri-State. If you're paying the same amount per kilowatt, why would they want to reduce what they're getting? Because hydro is still, would be considered in that 5% unless they want to just do it with this new solar farm that they're going to, uh, it's a one, it's a one mega, megawatt system, correct?
460 homes or something like that.
So I, I think maybe it would be a good approach to have the council meet with them board to board, uh, invite us, because they obviously know where we stand as, as far as the B O C C. Uh, would like to work with them, but you've got to have somebody on the other side willing to work or it's not going to work at all.
All right. Anybody else before we go to the next topic?
So can we wrap up with an action on that? Um, John, do you want to, uh, approach Empire Electric? And ask if they would like to come to either a special meeting or a work session?
I will get this on a work session for the council to give direction. And in the meantime, I will talk to, um, Empire, whether they would be willing to or not to sit down with council and discuss it.
John, would you like me to go with you to Empire?
Excuse me?
Would you like me to go with you to Empire?
Sure.
Okay. Maybe Wednesday.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Okay, uh, the next topic is County Road F to the airport, and Commissioner Candelaria brought this up.
So, um, I, I guess my question here, and I've emailed Rob and I, I didn't get a chance to really look at his email a lot. But County Road. to really look at his email a lot, but County Road F to the airport, if we're talking also with what we feel might be coming, the airport is a critical issue for the city, for the county, everybody in this community. So since we're talking about agreements, that airport also serves us, and I was down there last week or a week and a half ago, and the road is getting rather marginal. So is that something that we could look at together as far as a budget item? I know that we probably can't get anything on the airport grounds, the FAA funding because it's off, but is that something that we could look at together? I mean, it's a very short section, it's probably a half a mile at best. But it serves us both, and, and I think, you know, if we could come up with some funding together, we could get that done quicker and sooner than later.
Any questions or?
Is that the road that the fire, the fire district uses for access to the runway? County Road F?
I, I don't know if, I mean, they use all of the roads in the district, but F is specifically that little short road to the airport off of G Road, and then it turns east and west, and it turns into 20, or is it 21?
Yeah.
So it, it changes the direction there. But I'm only talking the paved area, and it just goes to the end of the, the airport. That asphalt terminates there, and then it turns into a gravel road. Not talking about the gravel road that accesses the lower gates to the south, I'm talking about just to the main terminal.
I, I think, Amy, there's a back entrance to the runway just off of Road G.
Okay, gotcha. Just, just because I don't know, perhaps if it, if we could tie it into funds for the airport, if it was, you know, for emergency use or such. Could be a rest question.
And John, do you know, because I remember Russ was talking about they're eventually going to repave the parking lot, do you know when, what year that was, he was looking at? Because if it's next year, we could.
I believe that was going to be planned in with city roadwork, and I'm not sure when that was going to be planned for.
So as soon as we, so we just chose that, or we're talking about that Armstrong firm to lead that master plan with the airport, so, you know, they're starting to formulate the plan of action, I think, there.
Amy, can you elaborate on that? So you, you've got a firm that's, that's giving recommendations for the airport, is that correct?
Yeah, we chose a firm called Armstrong. They're out of Grand Junction, and they'll be looking at the airport to do the master, or sorry, the airport layout plan.
The reason I ask that is, so Alamosa County actually are the ones that control the airport in Alamosa. And they're, they're, in the last 10 years, that airport, which had, they have 17,000 constituents that live in Alamosa, we have 28,000, I think it's probably going to be 30 when the census comes back in Montezuma County. And they have received over $22 million for road, airport improvements in that period of time. And I know that he had talked about an advisory board that, that like the city council would put together, but it sounds like this is another avenue that you guys are talking about on the map.
So, so Armstrong will be spearheading that, that's part of the whole package. So, you know, they're just hitting the ground now, you know, because we just last, last session gave them a go-ahead. So community outreach and community, you know, teaching, education will be part of the whole package. So they will definitely be reaching out to, to members of the county and constituents and towns and such. So stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
But that would be specific just to the airport grounds, correct? So.
Airport specific, yeah.
Right, so I'm off of the airport grounds because that's going to be left up to us. They're not, the FAA is not going to have anything to do with that. So I guess budgetary, since we're all in it, and I could get some more firm numbers from our road supervisor of what it would take to, you know, what his plan is, whether he plans to grind it, chip sillet, or grind it, build it up, and overlay it. I haven't gotten that far, but is that something that we could coordinate, collaborate, to make that move forward in, in the thought of what we're going to potentially try to bring here? And like I said, I haven't measured it off, but I can't imagine it being more than a half a mile at best, 25, 2600 feet.
Would you guys be willing to have a discussion about it, one of your work sessions?
Yeah, and have Phil Johnson there.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, because that road is bad, it's deteriorating.
It, it's kind of like what we did with Seventh Street or J Road now. I, I mean, when you guys gave us that access to that right of way, and we were able to push it through, I mean, that was, that, that shows good cooperation and working together. I mean, we have a road department that builds roads, and it, it's great for our community, the lower section, or the lower south end of our community to the east, it's made a lot of difference. Plus the bus traffic doesn't even exist on Main Street anymore, if you haven't seen that.
Is it possible to get some kind of estimate on that project?
Yes.
Before we go, go much further?
Yes, we will, and I'll talk to our road superintendent to see what's, how he feels is the best way to approach that road. It is in a wet area down there, I will advise you that, which you guys probably know because of the airport and the drainage that you have to deal with there. So that drainage from that airport actually goes right straight to the east, a lot of it. So that road sits kind of in a, in a wet area, so there are some, there are some things that we have to really consider with that drainage and everything going across that short section of road. But yes, David, I will, I will be able to get that, and hopefully we'll be able to come to another work session or get that to you guys as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Okay, last thing on the agenda is other topics. Is there any other topics that city councilmen or commissioners would like to discuss? Do you guys have anything? I have one, and it's just a question. I was contacted by the American Legion about their RVs. Do you guys have any kind of update on what's going with the veterans there at the American Legion and, and some RV park that they have? Does anybody have any information on that?
I will go ahead and fill you in. They have been running a campground out of their parking lot. And we, the city received complaints and talked to them about it, and the original story was that they had to be a veteran, and they were just taking donations. Then we found that a sign had been put up that there was a $5 fee per day, and it didn't matter who, anybody could park there, and didn't matter how long either. So we contacted them and said, you know, you're not zoned to be a campground. So you need to stop this. And it's been suggested, well, what about just letting them put veterans in there? The problem gets to be, how do we know whether they're veterans or not? And where does it stop? They're in direct competition with others all around us who have campgrounds, who are doing it properly, and we just said, you know, unfortunately, I know it's a fundraiser for them, but unfortunately, it does violate the zoning for that area. It is a residential neighborhood. And it really wasn't a problem with the neighbors until the, some of those trailers started parking for weeks at a time rather than just a day or two.
John, this is Rachel. Do we have like a special use permit that we could like work with them, you know, and but set out ground rules so that we can revoke it if they're not complying?
Not according to the current land use code. I asked that question also, can't they just apply for a variance? And no, there is no, there is nothing in there that would allow for it.
I would say something that, and I'm sure that your land codes, code works the same way that the counties does, the, the job of the commissioners and the job of the city council is, we have two jobs, and one is we are policymakers, and we are over the budget. So if there's any policy that you have that you think needs to be changed because of a certain circumstance, if four city councilmen voted to change that policy, I'm pretty sure that it would stand up. So it's something to consider.
And that goes back to land use code, and I, I think, you know, we're, we're dealing that obviously right now, but I think, and I don't have that in front of me, but I think there are only a few items on there right now that we're looking at changing, and it's probably just a handful after we took the DRV off. So sometimes, I mean, making small changes are just as effective as trying to, you know, bite off the whole, can't eat the whole pizza at one bite.
No, what that ought to do.
That's true.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
Okay, I just have one topic to bring up, but this is more, you guys will have to talk about it, just because for James, the breakwater at Mcfee Reservoir. I don't know if you were trying to get the city involved in helping with that, or?
At the last meeting that we had with Dolores, because it affects Dolores more specifically than Cortez or Mankas, obviously it's in the county, so we're having to deal with it. But there again, it's a funding issue that we're trying to address with the Forest Service because they have a, a specific account for recreation. But there again, it's hard to get movement on that. But we are working, and we, we have went over to Lake Night Horse and looked at their system that they have over there, and, and it, I think it would work here. It's just a matter of funding, and it's, it's pretty expensive.
Two hundred and like 50 or 75,000 dollars, something like that.
Wow.
To accommodate. The other, which makes more sense to me, is to move the marina to House Creek. Therefore, you don't need all of that breakwater.
Mm-hmm.
And he's actually in a cove, and he's more protected. What he gets right now is he gets all of the storms coming from the east and the west, and just gets pounded, therefore needing that much breakwater. I think he has approached the Forest Service, but any help that we could all do together because there is a lot of revenue and economics that come out of the people that go to that lake. They have fishing tournaments out there, it's a great recreation area, I mean, people use it every weekend, it's, it's, it's packed. And it's one of the only reservoirs in our area that have inspections, muscle inspections. So you can actually get a craft, a water craft on it. So I think it's critical that we all look at that and put the pressure on the Forest Service to get some kind of movement out of them, just like we're talking about Empire Electric.
Right.
And he stores it in the wintertime in, in House Creek. One of the main problems, and I don't remember if you folks remember, a few years ago when Viceta, when the, when the marina got destroyed at Viceta, what happens is, is in the spring, part of the lake, the lake melts off, and you still, but you still have ice. And then if you have a wind event, if you had a wind event that was coming from the north to the south, and that marina was still there, it would completely destroy it. Several years ago at the Groundhog Lake, the rancher went up there, 100, his fence was 100 yards off of the lake, and he went up there and it looked like somebody took a bulldozer, and it completely, it shoved the ice over 100 yards up on the shore and destroyed his fence. So it's a dangerous, if, if the marina was moved to House Creek, all the problems would be solved. Well, you think, if you go to Lake Powell, go to Lake Mead, where are all the marinas at? They're in a cove.
Yeah, tucked away.
They're all tucked away in a cove. So.
Okay.
Anything else, councilmen?
I just want to say thank you. I'm really appreciative that we were able to have this collaborative meeting, and I hope that we continue to do so. I feel like this meeting was very productive.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
This is Mary Lady, I just wanted to thank you for hosting this meeting, and we're looking forward to more meetings like this in the future.
I second that.
That's it for me as well, thank you.
Is there, is there a night that works better for you all? Because I think that going forward, we're going to have a lot more to talk about and a lot more to consider. I know that, you know, this is a relatively new council, and I'm going to be getting two new members sitting next to me here in the next five, five months? So do you guys want to do this every couple months, or suggestions from you all?
I'd say at least every quarter, every quarter.
Well, I think once a quarter.
Every quarter?
Sounds good. Mondays seem to work pretty good for most of the council here.
Mondays are good.
Yep.
And then just before the end, I just, I have a list of topics that I, I want to eventually get to as, as a board, or board to board. Okay, hold on. Pass to Mesa Verde, you know, because I know, once you start working on the Cortez side of things, you know, I want to work on that together. Economic development and recovery, you know, I think we need, I think we need to, you know, we've been working on economic development on the county side, but I think it'd be nice to work together, because sometimes properties are great in the city, but, or the other towns. So just economic development. Childcare in our community, I think that's a big issue. Homelessness and mental health. And there's one more I just thought of, but I forgot.
Well, I would think with that list, we, we better have a meeting sooner than quarterly.
Oh, I know, talking to Jim Spratlin, the emergency manager, I think it'd be great to have a joint meeting and have him and Lori Johnson come in and present to us, because they're kind of the emergency management team for our community. So I think it'd be good to host them. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just hoping that maybe we could have another meeting at the first here in a couple of months.
Before you guys head out?
With everybody?
We could do every other Monday.
Sounds good.
I would, I would say right now where we're at with COVID, if we could at least do every other month, then we could start looking at things that are affecting us, because it does affect us all. We're all in Montezuma County, so I think we'll have Shaq set it up for every other month, and we'll, we'll try and get as much done as we possibly can do, and we'll do it on Monday nights.
Every other Monday night?
I, I could make every other month, every other month work, especially since we have so much going on in the world right now.
And remember, it takes teamwork to make the dream work.
Anything else for the order? Thank you, Councilman Mayor and the City Manager for the productive meeting. We'll see you in a couple of months. Thank you.
I, I have one last thing.
Thank you.
Our, or my phone number is on our county website, and if you guys ever need me, that's my cell phone number, it's a personal cell phone number, goes right straight to me. Don't hesitate reaching out, leaving a message, I will get back to you. Obviously, as you know, we're in a lot of meetings, but I will get back to you within a 24-hour period.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night!
Good night.